Good evening. I call the March 26, 2024 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland Two Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to approve the agenda for the March 26, 2024 Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Agostini to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, Board Members, please vote. The vote is five yes, zero no, two not present. The motion passes. And I did fail to mention Dr. Scott is-
Mr. Trapp, I am present. Yes.
Okay, all right. Let's change that to six present. I mean, six yes and one not present. Dr. Scott is joining us via phone, and Mrs. McFadden is not here. We will now move to Executive Session. Item 4.1, may I please have a motion go into Executive Session?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student admission requests into the district's adult ed program, contractual matter regarding the purchase or sale of property, receipt of legal advice regarding a litigation update, receipt of legal advice regarding an insurance matter, personnel matter regarding multi-year contracts, and employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Nash, to go into Executive Session. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Washington, does that look correct on the screen? Mrs. Washington, is that correct up there? Did I lose? Okay, okay. I didn't hear you. Sorry. All right. Board Members, please vote.
My phone is affirmative.
Thank you. The vote is six yes, one not present, and the motion carries. The Board will now enter Executive Session. May I have a motion to end the executive session?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move that we adjourn Executive Session at 6:30 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
That Miss Washington?
Yes.
A motion is made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Mrs. Agostini?
It says we'll resume at 6:30. Oh, excuse me. Yes, it is correct. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Board Members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, and the motion carries. We will now move to the Inspirational Moment and Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Washington will introduce tonight's guest.
Good evening. Tonight's Inspirational Moment will be presented by Joseph Keels Elementary School, where they've been providing 65 years of excellence in Richland Two. We will be inspired by Principal Butler, and she will be sharing the SC, South Carolina ETV partnership that we have with the Beamer Foundation. And for Women's History Month, we'd like to honor the women who are serving and have served in our military. Tonight, the Joseph Keels Elementary School Color Guard will demonstrate leadership and character through the presentation of colors and the Pledge of Allegiance. The Color Guard serves under the leadership of Tyler Mitchell, who's a Citadel graduate, and the former Keels PTA President, Joy McClendon. Let's give our Joseph Keels Cubs a warm welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the presentation of colors. for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms! Right face! Four, five!
Good evening. I am Alvera C. Butler, Principal of Joseph Keels Elementary. This evening, I am joined by my Assistant Principals, Ms. Katrina Holmes and Dr. Robert Carswell. We are honored to showcase for you this evening a part of what makes Joseph Keels a special place, community partnerships. Over the last two years, we have had the pleasure of partnering with the Shane and Emily Beamer Family Foundation. Beginning in August of 2022, this partnership was formed, and the Beamer Family Foundation, also known as our BFF, began. We were invited to their practice field and were given $4,000 and school supplies, marking the beginning of a mutually beneficial partnership. The partnership has provided us with mentoring from student athletes across the University of South Carolina Athletics Department, including tennis, track and field, swimming, equestrian, and of course, football. In addition, the Shane and Emily Beamer Foundation has arranged student field trips to the USC football facilities, football games, and basketball games. At the beginning of this school year, USC's football team packed over 100 backpacks for Joseph Keels and three of our Richland Two sister schools, Jackson Creek, Conder, and Forest Lake. We got a chance to hang out in some of the coolest places. We did press conferences, and as a bonus, our faculty and staff received some special treatment from the Beamers. Emily and Shane have been amazing, and we thank them for this partnership and all that it has meant to our students, faculty, and staff at JKE. We would like to highlight a shining star that is an offspring of our partnership with the Shane and Emily Beamer Family Foundation, a television series called The Cool and the Strong. Now we will hear from the three main characters.
My name is Cameron Ellison, and I'm 11 years old in the sixth grade at Dent Middle School. And I play the role of Magic Strong.
Hello, my name is Journey Whitestone, and I'm 10 years old in the fifth grade at Joseph Keels Elementary School, and I play the role, Riva Lemon.
And I'm Dominic Carr, I'm 12 years old. I'm a sixth grader at Dent Middle School, and I'm Riva's twin brother.
Thanks for supporting us.
And helping us.
Help others.
And just so you know, Dominic and Cameron were fifth graders at Keels when we started this process. All right, let's take a look at this short trailer, all filmed at Joseph Keels, except for scenes at Williams Bryce. And just to note, Coach Beamer was a special guest in Episode One.
Now I'm writing down to you, keep it real with you, since I'm your new guardian.
I have to get you reading on your level.
Is that my fault? Is this my fourth score in two years?
Not sure if bringing him here was the right idea.
Will you open it?
One second. I can't do this. Those are real students out there. Magic, tell me your dream.
I want to play football one day.
How bad do you want your dream?
I want my dream bad.
That's your teacher you've hired? Is he from Mars?
He put a poster up in my old space, said 6A, doing all such weird stuff.
Stop yelling at my brother.
The cries vanish into thin air.
Vanished?
My name's Will Gray. Magic's my game.
Wow! How did you do it?
How did you do that?
Magic.
Where are my dreams?
Hey, Magic.
Oh, my gosh, Coach!
So many give up on students like this, though.
Students need to learn in a magical place. They need to be taken away to someplace new so that they can open their minds to learn.
That's why I got you here. You're a smart kid, okay? And I believe in you. Now it's time for you to believe in yourself.
Whatever's going on with you, you can't get away.
Are you ready to spark, open your mind?
I think I'm real young.
What's young?
Twenty-seven.
That's young?
All right. The Cool and the Strong was created by Ms. Stephanie Moore, who is with us tonight. Ms. Moore, please stand. She's an author. She is an author and so much more, as her name suggests. She knows how to get things done. Stephanie is also the wife of Derek Moore, player development coach for USC football. With the support of SCTV and SCE TV and their Chief Educational Officer, Dr. Solandra Bowman, please stand, Dr. Bowman. They have brought the cool and the strong to life. Without the support of Richland Two and South Carolina Educational Television and the leadership of these two ladies, this amazing television series would not have happened. For that, we say thank you. And I would be remiss if I did not recognize Ms. Kate Hart, Dominic's mom, who has been with us through every step of this journey. Thank you for being here, Ms. Hart. So, you should know, Episode Two will premiere on Sunday, April 21, on South Carolina Educational Television, and includes a special guest appearance from women's basketball head coach Dawn Staley. Join us on SCE TV, Sunday, April 21. Episode One will be rebroadcast at 4:00 PM, and Episode Two will premiere at 4:30 PM. Thank you all for inspiring us, and we hope we have inspired you as well. Have a great evening. We are Keels Cubs Strong.
Mr. Chair, Board Members, Dr. Moore, we have two national and state recognitions to bring to you this evening. Our first is a Student Award, and our second will be the Board Certified Teachers. If you remember, every year we do that, and obviously there are a lot of them here tonight. We start with Chandler Lawton. Chandler is a senior at Spring Valley High School, where she serves as student body president. She's actively involved in several academics and service groups, including National Honor Society, Red Cross Club, Save the Children Action Network, and the Future Business Leaders of America. At the state level, she serves as the 2324 State President of the South Carolina Association of Student Councils. That would probably be enough to celebrate, but I haven't gotten to the award yet. In seventh grade, Chandler started to begin her work at the Anne Frank Center as a tour guide for a traveling exhibit at her middle school. Since then, she's attended numerous events and workshops hosted by the center. The Anne Frank Center at the University of South Carolina, official United States partner to the Anne Frank House, has announced five recipients of the inaugural Anne Frank Awards. These national awards were established to honor individuals involved in Anne Frank Center programs who demonstrate outstanding commitment to advancing Holocaust education. One award was given to a student, an educator, an artist, and for a lifetime achievement. As you might imagine, the Student Award went to Chandler Lawton. Chandler, please come up here with your family, your principal, Jeff Timoney, and receive this honor from the board. National Award winner. Back up, we got a lot of people getting in. There you go. You guys are good. Let's go ahead. Ready? Perfect. How about another round of applause for Chandler? Thank you, sir. And I'll now turn it over to Michelle Taylor Brown, who will take over for our Board Certified Teacher recognition.
Mr. Trapp, Board Chair, Dr. Moore, and Richland School District Two Board of Trustees, we would like to recognize our first-time National Board Certified Teachers, as well as our teachers who have earned National Board Certification for another time. I would like to acknowledge that eight of them are on their third renewal. National Board Certification requires teachers to demonstrate content knowledge, reflect on student work samples, video and analyze their teaching practice, and document the impact of assessment and collaboration on student learning. It was created so that teachers, just as professionals in other fields, could achieve distinction by demonstrating that they can meet high and rigorous standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. Congratulations to our National Board Certified Teachers. Please hold your applause until everyone has been recognized, and we will start off with our first-time recipients, Kathryn Cahill from Bridge Creek Elementary, Ashley Gordine, North Springs Elementary, and Lauren Sterkey from the district office. If we could please give them a round of applause. With our renewals, we have Yvette Addison, Bethel Hanbury Elementary, Nikki Nolan, Bridge Creek Elementary, Elizabeth Robish, Bridge Creek Elementary, Danielle Snyder, Catapa Trail Elementary, Chandra Stadler, Lake Carolina Upper Elementary, Pamela Bruni, Kelly Mill Middle, Casey Ellisor, Longleaf Middle, Tempe Bowers, Blythewood High, Kirsten Bullington, Richland Two Institute for Innovation, LaShawn King, Ridgeview High, Kenneth Adler, Spring Valley High, and Vanessa Roden, Westwood High. If we could please give them all a round of applause.
We're going to take a brief recess and go outside for a photo, and we'll be right back. All right, we are back in session. Dr. Moore, would you like to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Dr. Franklin Foster to come up and introduce to the Board our newest team member, the new Executive Director for Human Resources.
Mr. Trapp, Board Members, it is indeed a pleasure to welcome Latoya Adams to our HR team as the Executive Director for Human Resources. Dr. Adams joins us from Dorchester Four School District, where she's had over 25 years of education experience, where she's been a teacher, an assistant principal, a principal, as well as a district-level administrator in several districts in the state of South Carolina, as well as in North Carolina. So we're excited to have her as a part of our team and partnering to work to help us with our recruitment initiatives, as well as working with our teachers to make sure that we are providing the best possible workplace for our employees. Thank you. Welcome, Dr. Adams.
Thank you, Dr. Foster, and welcome, Dr. Adams. Glad to have you on board. We will now move to Item 7.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the Consent Agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda for the March 26, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Ms. Washington? All right, Board Members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, and the motion carries. We will now move on to public participation. We have five individuals. We have five individuals, five individuals have signed up to address the board. You will be given three minutes to address the board. To assist with timing, the light, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red and you will hear an audible tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Before we begin, I will remind you that our, remind you that our meetings are live streamed and recorded according to policy BEDH. Comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive and vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation, typically we refer to a staff member for response at a later time. Our first speaker this evening will be Tiffany Palmer. All right, our next speaker will be Condi Saband. All right, our next speaker will be LaShonda Hicks. I'm sorry, Latasha Hicks. All right, our next speaker will be Rhonda Stewart. Rhona Stewart, I'm sorry. All right, well, our final speaker will be Cassie Whitner.
Hi, Casey's my mom. My name's Max Whitner. I'm a sophomore at Blackwood High School. I had a few things I wanted to share. I don't usually get to come to the board meetings because I have rehearsal on Tuesday nights, so I, they may seem a bit disjointed. One, the dress code they proposed a couple meetings ago that prohibits hats, leggings, yoga pants, pajamas, and jeans, jeans with holes in them. I don't, many students at my school wear these, specifically girls at my school, and this would target half of the population. And not a lot of them seem very aware of it. And I, I, I don't think it's very, it's very authoritarian. And I think that we should be allowed to be comfortable because we had to be there for six hours. I like wearing leggings every once in a while. My friends liked wearing them, so I, I would like, I would ask you to reconsider them. The attendance policy, I believe, may, is too restrictive, where it's the five absences and you fail the class. While COVID protocol likely impacted the attendance numbers in the past, with prescribed days away, and the current policy impacts the high-performing students, including my best friend, who's one of the highest performing in our class. She gets really stressed out about missing days. And, but she's a high performer, so she shouldn't be punished and caught in this net for the low-performing students because she's sick a couple days. Pep rallies and special assemblies take seat time from classrooms, but if I wanted, if I wanted to go to a dentist appointment to check on my teeth, I'd get punished for that. I've looked at different schools' websites about the Alive at 25 for parking passes, and a lot of them seem required, but I couldn't find any details if it was a state requirement, a district requirement, or a school-by-school policy. But it seems redundant. Whenever I asked my friends about the, what their experience with Alive at 25 was, a lot of them said they don't remember anything from it, or they just slept through it. So it seems kind of pointless to spend $45 on this class where you learn nothing from it. Thank you.
Thank you. The board will now vote on items discussed in executive session. May I please have a motion regarding the student admission request into the district's adult education program?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash?
I move to approve the student admission requests into the district's adult education program for students one through two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Ms. Washington? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Nash, a motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Ms. Nash, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding a contractual matter regarding the purchase and lease of property?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. McFadden?
I move to allow the district to lease the old Bethel Hanbury gym to the town of Blackwood per the terms in the intergovernmental agreement to lease.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Mrs. McFadden, is that correct on the screen? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion carries. May I please have a motion, may I please have a motion regarding the employment recommendation certified releases?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Washington?
I move to accept the employment recommendation and certified releases as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has, motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
Thank you. I have a question. I actually sent the question in, but I'm asking for it to be answered publicly as well. Regarding, two-thirds of our teachers that are leaving, that are listed on this report are leaving for other career opportunities. And the board has received in the past month a, a letter from a former teacher last year, and also then we had somebody come and speak to us about public, during public participation, excuse me, regarding exit interviews. What is the, what is administration doing in terms of granting exit interviews and just not the brief form when the employee decides to separate from us?
We are currently conducting exit interviews for those that are requesting exit interviews, which we have several teachers that have requested it, and we are conducting those currently. Of course, we are also going to start doing random samplings of, of teachers who are leaving as well that may not have requested so that we can ask questions about, would you be willing to participate in an exit interview with us so that we can just get some additional information from them? Our teachers are afforded the opportunity to fill out the exit survey, which most of them have filled that information out, but of course, we want to have deeper conversation with them as well. And that information will be provided to the board once we complete those exit interviews.
One final question regarding that. In the employee survey, or how do they, do they have to initiate the conversation about the exit interview? Or is there some type of form in the survey where they fill it out? And I would like to speak to, you know?
It's on our exit, it's on our actual separation that they can complete if they would like to speak with a member of HR regarding their separation.
Okay, and if they do, anybody that requests it will be honored to speak to HR. Thank you.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Foster.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Porter?
Yes, I was just curious to know, is there anything preventing us from inviting all employees to complete one separate from when they do their separation request? Maybe prior to the approval? Just to get more feedback? Because in the process of separating, you may not want to disclose all information as you're separating from the district, but then as a follow-up after things have been submitted and seen, and that might be more likely to get responses.
Dr. Foster? Ms. Porter, that is, one of the things that Dr. Coleman and I talked about today is where we currently have the, the exit survey placed is probably not the most appropriate place. It's placed as an employee is completing the separation, so we're looking at removing it from that location and placing it in our separation letter to the employee and ask them to complete it then. Because that is probably not the best place for it when someone's filling out a document and having to go and fill out another document, and they may be doing it in the middle of a period, planning period or something that they, that they may not have time to complete it and give a good review of our, of a district, of the district.
Okay, and I have a follow-up as well. Are the surveys, are they automatically sent to this principal? The copy of the survey, the Google survey, sent to the principal when that separation happens?
No, the exit information is not sent directly to principals. It's compiled at the, and Dr. Coleman has the information. She compiles it for us and then she shares it with us through our survey tool that we use in the district.
Okay.
Which is K-12, K-12 Insights is the instrument that we use currently.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Foster. Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Washington, is that correct on the screen? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion carries. We will now move to unfinished business, action requested. May I please have a motion regarding the 2025-2026 school year calendar?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
I move to approve the 2025-2026 school year calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Ms. Agostini, is that correct on the screen?
It is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion carries. We'll now move to new business, action requested, item 11.1. The agenda item in this section is regarding the 2024 South Carolina School Board Association's legislative resolutions. Proposed resolution regarding Class III officers. Mrs. McFadden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm bringing before the board once again the Class III officer proposal, which is basically asking that we train our own staff for security guards in front of our schools. So I will read what our resolution is. The Child Safety and Traffic Control in School Zones. Richland School District Two believes in the safety of our students at all times, especially when entering our school zones for the purpose of receiving academic instruction. Therefore, we believe an amendment should be made in corresponding laws at the local, state, and federal level to allow local district safety officers the ability to direct traffic in school zones during the normal operating school hours. To support this initiative, we recommend such training for directing traffic take place at our newly developed Center for School Safety and Targeted Violence. I'd like to make a motion to send this resolution to the South Carolina School Board Association for approval by their board of directors of the legislative committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
What type of, first of all, this is presented by the committee? The legislative committee, or is this presented by Mrs. McFadden?
If I may ask a question related as well. Is this the exact thing we sent in last year? Were we proposed at the?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mrs. McFadden, if you, you want to answer Ms. Agostini's question?
And this was a proposal from the, from the legislative committee. And we've decided to get together to, to, to get this done. We brought it to the board in December for approval so that we could take it to the legislative conference. However, they want us to submit it in, in August with the new resolution so they have time to vet it for themselves. It had to be brought on the floor. Usually at this time is whenever they want the resolutions, in the spring. However, we didn't realize that this was a concern until August, when school was, had already started, and the resolutions were already done. So when we brought it to the floor in December, they wanted us to wait. They got voted down. They wanted us to wait and bring it in, in August. So this will go on the August resolutions.
All right, thank you, Mrs. McFadden. And my concern is when I'm looking at BDE board committees, and it states that the function of special committees will be fact-finding deliberative and advisory, but never legislative or administrative. So to me, this is, you know, I appreciate all the efforts that the committee has done, but I have concerns that there should be something from a standing committee and not actually a special or an ad hoc committee, and it is not in compliance with policy.
If I may ask again, to make sure I'm on the right page on this, is this the exact thing that we took to the legislative delegation in Charleston last year?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, so I mean, this is something we've actually voted on in the past to take to the, to the conference. And this, this vote is to have it proposed to the School Board Association so that it could be included with their resolutions that will go out to all the school districts in the state. So I, I don't, I don't know that this was made up per se in the legislative committee, but we have already voted on it once last year.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Porter?
I just wanted to share with our colleagues that this has also been submitted. I submitted this for the South Carolina Caucus of Black School Board Members to have as a table, roundtable discussion this summer, or actually early spring. And it will be one of the roundtable discussions so that we can get the word out, so that fellow board members in other districts will support it because we do understand that this is an issue that may not affect all communities, but it affects ours. And the president has approved it in that conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Porter, I appreciate that. Give me just a moment, I need to send the motion.
I do have one question.
Yes, Ms. Washington?
So in the event that they decide not to, is it something that we still, as a board, would like to make it a priority for the upcoming legislative session?
Absolutely. So I will say that this is important simply because if you go down hard scrabble any given day, you have people out there directing traffic. The concern was with that, we were told that only Class III officers could direct traffic. However, that's not what we see on hard scrabble. It's very important for our students, especially when parents are leaving, taking that left-hand turn out of any given school to be able to make that turn and the traffic be directed as usual. A lot of other districts don't have this concern because they're, they're already doing it and it's bypassed like it has been for many years here. However, here in Richland Two, we're not able to do that. We just can't do that here. In other counties, they may be able to get away with that. The concern is that in other counties, they're not able to afford the officers just like we aren't. And so they actually have their school safety officers out there directing traffic like what we've had before. But again, in Richland Two, we can't do that. So we have to make sure that our kids are safe crossing the street. We can't have our children getting hit by cars because we can't afford the Class III officers to put out there. officers to put out there. So we want to train our people, and that's why this is important. So we'll be pushing this regardless of if the South Carolina School Board does it, but we want to get more people on board.
All right, we have a motion before us. As soon as it is on the screen, we'll look at it and... All right, is that appropriate up there, Ms. McFadden? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is five yes, one abstained. The motion carries, and one not present. The motion carries. We will now move to new business. No action requested. The agenda item in this section is an update on chronic absenteeism. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to introduce our lead social worker, Mrs. Abby Cobb, to present an update to the board on chronic absenteeism.
Good evening, Chairman Trapp, board members, and Dr. Moore. Thank you so much for allowing me to come tonight. Again, I'm Abby Cobb, lead social worker. I'm joined by Laverda Reagans, who is our lead attendance interventionist. And I'd also love to take a moment of privilege and just recognize that we had several attendance administrators from our schools who chose to join tonight, if you guys don't mind standing, just in support of the work that we are doing in our schools and specifically in support of our attendance administrators as well. Thank you for being here. Okay. Next. All right, thank you. Real quickly, just as a quick refresher, chronic absenteeism is defined by when a student misses 10% or more of their enrollment period. So if they were enrolled with us for an entire school year, if they missed 18 or more days of school, this includes all types of absences and also includes if a student misses more than 50% of the school day. This is not data that we pull. We do not identify students as chronically absent. This is determined by the State Department of Ed. They are the ones who would determine if a student is chronically absent. Here's our data. Back in 2017 and 18 is when all schools across the country were required to report out their chronic absenteeism numbers. Here you can see the major increase from the 2021 school year. And then again, the last two school years, 21 out of five Richland Two students have missed 18 or more days of school. One out of five Richland Two students have missed 18 or more days of school. We are below the state average, but not much further below than that state average. The Department of Ed gives us updates on our data. They've just started the last two school years, giving us more frequent updates rather than just the end of the year. So we can compare our chronic absenteeism rates from the 45th day, the 90th day. There's supposed to be an update today that was not available today, so we'll have that soon. But you can see 2023, this school year, what an impact in that 45th day of school. Compared to last year, we were 21% on the 45th day of school. This year, we were at 12%. We were dancing at our desk when we saw this percentage, and I shouted it out to everybody. I do want to just make everybody aware, the trends will continue to rise. Second semester attendance rates always increase. I don't know where we'll be at that 135th day. I hope that we'll continue to stay at these lower numbers, but as you can see, the difference between the 45th and the 90th day, but we are still trending towards lower than we were last year. So how do we address chronic absenteeism? I'm sure many of you have read it because it's everywhere in national research information. The White House has shared information about how to address and how to work with our chronic absenteeism. So our national research is showing that you really have to focus on a comprehensive district response and strategy. You must have that tiered approach. We can't just address the students who have attendance issues. We have to take it from that whole MTSS, that whole systems approach. We must make data-informed decisions. We have to address the root causes. If we don't address the root causes of why our students are not attending school, there are barriers in why our kids are not attending schools, and we must have the resources, the supports, to be able to address those root causes. And we have to build the capacity of our leaders. Providing tiered attendance interventions, it's new language. It's something, just like all things in public education, we continue to evolve, right? And so we have to build the capacity of our leaders to understand what types of tiered interventions are needed that's going to best address the needs of their school, working at things from a whole system level, and then looking at individual children. And here's what we're doing in Richland Two. In order to create a culture where attendance matters, you have to address systems and you have to address the tiered attendance approaches. So when we think about our tiers, we think about the triangle, the systems where attendance matters, that's our foundation. We have to build a foundation, and we're continuing to build that foundation. We've done a lot of work. I am very proud of the work that we have done in this district. Systems that we have in place are our attendance interventionists, making sure that every school has an attendance administrator over attendance, making sure that we now have every school has school attendance teams, ensuring that we have effective training and onboarding. It's not easy, and it doesn't always, it's not always common sense when you're looking at how to address attendance, attendant secretaries, the training. I always said I could not be an attendant secretary. It requires too much, like, fine, detailed things, and that's not my strength. So we have to ensure that we have that proper training, data monitoring, using that common language. But then as we look forward, we really have to put an emphasis on Tier One. If you just address the problem, we're never going to decrease our numbers. We have to look at the whole system. So when we look at Tier One, we talk about Attendance Matters Campaign. Hopefully, you all know and have seen that we have increased communication with our community regarding attendance. You've seen school initiatives, the Spirit Week in September. We had a poster contest. So there's lots of different things. The schools are being really creative in how they're working to address attendance lessons. This is one thing that we've learned. We don't just need to focus on perfect attendance, but improved attendance, right? We know that positive reinforcement is the best way for improvement. And so when our students and our families are making those improvements, we acknowledge that, we address that. Those student data meetings. And then as you work up, you look at your Tier Two Student Success Plans, parent meetings, seat time recovery in small groups. Tier Three is where we do the Attendance Intervention Plan. That is our AIP. And I really want to stress the fact that in order to have a culture where attendance matters, these are the areas that we have decided as a district we really want to focus. Connection over compulsory. You come to school because that's what's in the best interest. That's what's best for you. That's what's best for your family, not just because the law says you have to. Ensuring that attendance is tied to learning. Everybody plays a role when it comes to addressing attendance. And accountability. We must ensure that our students are making the right choices. We ourselves must have effective procedures in place. So I want to take a minute to spotlight our attendance interventionists. As you guys hopefully remember, using ESER funds, we hired five attendance interventionists. We have Laverda, who serves as our lead, and we have four. Two are for middle and high, and two are for elementary school. The work that they are doing is instrumental to where we are at as we've made this progress. They're meeting monthly with school attendance teams. We have quarterly attendance administrator meetings. We had one just last week for our middle and our high schools. They're providing ongoing data, and I can't stress to you how important it is to provide the data for our schools and not rely upon our administrators having time to pull the data themselves and analyze the data. When they come to meetings, they get straight to work. They focus on what are the needs, not now I need to pull the data, figure out what their trends are, and that the attendance interventionists are able to provide that. We've created a resource guide. Again, there's lots of different things that they have done. I just wanted to highlight the work that we have done with these attendance interventionists. It's groundbreaking. It's innovative. We have school districts coming to us now, asking us about these positions. What have we done? How has it been effective? And I want to just share, they are ESER funds. And so without them, this work won't continue at the same level that it would be with them. So please keep that in mind during our budget approval. So just making sure that we all understand, attendance is the foundation. If you have a student who is struggling academically, look at their attendance. You have a student who may be having some behavior issues, struggling with their wellness, let's look at their attendance because many times it's the one thing that connects all of those areas. And attendance impacts the success in all levels for our schools. Our standardized testing, if they're not there, they're not getting the instruction, right? Our graduation, our dropout rates, our reading on grade level, even our staff retention. Attendance impacts all levels of success in our schools. In order to impact our attendance rates, we have to focus on having a welcoming school environment. We have to understand, I'm sorry, these are factors that impact our attendance rates. So having a welcoming school environment where students feel like they belong and they are connected. When students have those relationships, they're more likely to come to school. We know that poverty is tied. Our high-poverty schools are always going to have higher attendance rates, so we must address innovative approaches to ensure that we're meeting the needs of those unique families. Students' social emotional wellness, their mental health, the supports that we have available at school, and again, making sure that we have those resources to address the barriers that students are facing. So where do we go to from here? We continue to focus on building our attendance systems and those tiered interventions. We have to continue to build and sustain the capacity of our school leaders and the individuals within our staff, as well as maintain attendance interventionists. Not sure if I mentioned that part before. Again, continue to understand the poverty rates will impact our data. We need innovative strategies for students and parent engagement. We need resources to address those barriers. And we also have to focus on the social emotional wellness and the culture of belonging in our schools. We are working to implement conscious discipline district-wide and as well as continuing to really focus on our Learning Support Services staff-to-student ratios. These are some of the ways that we know we can address belonging, connectedness, and relationships with our students. At that time, thank you. I will take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. Is there any questions, board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Nash.
I wanted to start out with saying, you know, sometimes we have to celebrate, like you said, the improvement. So kudos to everybody that's involved in that.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I have a few questions. You had talked about the root causes. What are the root causes?
There's a wide variety. So we don't have like a systematic way of saying, hey, what's the root cause for this? It's more of a subjective, you know, having those conversations with families. And so so many times, it's barriers where our families are, you know, working a couple of jobs and they miss the bus, they don't get to school. Or they're having to stay home because there's no other option for that family to watch the younger children. There are situations where, you know, students are sick and there's excessive sickness, that kind of stuff. But there is also things that we must address where the idea that you have to come to school all day, every day is required to be successful. And that has been a shift that we have seen since the pandemic, as there is so many other options for our students and for society. So it's a wide variety of root causes, and that's why those tiered interventions are really essential, because we have to identify what are the problems for that individual student, that individual family, and help provide the resources to address that.
Thank you. On your slide for attendance impacts every measure of outcome for our school's success, that was a question that I had. I mean, it seems reasonable to think that if the student is missing school, that their standardized test scoring is going down, their GPA is going down, graduation rates, you know, are decreasing. But have we actually seen that? I mean, do we have the data to prove that in Richland Two?
I'm not really sure how exactly to say that. My understanding of our data is that our, you know, standardized testing scores, our dropout rates, and our graduation rates are lower, but to have an exact, direct correlation. I don't have that, you know, based on this student, their chronic absenteeism, did their test scores go lower? I don't have that data.
I guess that would be something that I'd be curious to see, as we've seen the, like your chart for one of the first charts since 2017, 2018, how that compares with our standardized test scoring, our graduation rates, and, you know, along those lines. And then my other thing, and I sent this in, I have a concern that we established, it was my understanding, I looked back at our minutes, in 2023-2024 school year was the initiation of our grade floor, where they got 40% or 50%. And if that correlates with the increase in absenteeism?
You're saying it was implemented during the 23-24 school year?
I believe it was, with the grading floor. And that would be an academics question, but...
It was prior to that.
Well, I saw that in the presentation, but I went back and I, in the, I think it was June of 2023, where we had a presentation where students were getting 40s or 50s.
I can't speak to the implementation. I can think about as a parent, I recall that, and my son graduated in '22, so I'm not real sure. I would need to rely upon others for the start date.
Okay, well, we'll look more into that. But my final question, in general, is the ESER funds. You mentioned that.
Mm-hmm.
They're gone in the fall of 2024, are they not? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Porter.
So I'm curious, because we have to turn in a doctor's excuse or whatever for when you have appointments, is it possible to gather that data point of how many of the absences are attributed to routine checkups and things like that, to separate?
We would be able to go back and just say whether it was a medical, you know?
Right, right.
We wouldn't be able to break it down to say what type of medical, but we could for medical excuses. Yes, ma'am?
That would give us a good idea of, from the list of possible options, we could remove that amount and then look specifically at the other factor.
Regarding the root causes, is that, yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
So this policy is based off of a 1976 law, which is a bigger conversation for lawmakers because you mentioned it, and it's a very valid point, times have changed. We are in, society has changed, the way that our kids are learning has changed. And so I think that that calls for bigger conversation. But I know that it's not in your presentation here, but I would like to know what percentages of our student population fall into Tier Three and Tier Four. Are they, is it a high percentage? And then also where, what schools, like what areas, what school zones? Because I'm sure that can also give us an indication. But for me, it's a data point to be able to say to lawmakers, we're pushing for competency-based education, which we have a waiver here in Richland Two. We have to change the system because it is a very old antiquated system, and kids go to college and they can take a class in three weeks and they can be done and get a grade. And so if you could provide some of that data, because when we talk about what are priorities for kids in the, you know, in this day and age, it's not based off of 1976. This is 2024. And we need to start making noise about these things because if kids can miss, we are parents and children, if you have children who are going to appointments, that's something that they have to do. You know, I'm not going to send my daughter to school sick. But also if I have children who are excelling in classes and they're done and they're bored, and so I'm not going to come to this class, or, we have to take a lot of this into consideration. So if you could provide some of those data points, I think this would be a very interesting conversation for us to start having with our lawmakers as it relates to attendance. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McFadden.
Good point, Ms. Washington, because the Legislative Committee has brought forth a competency-based letter for the board to approve. We're going to be submitting that next week, next board meeting. And basically what it is, is that competency-based... And basically what it is, is that, that competency-based policy is already in effect, but I think it's only for our R2E school. So what can happen when it is actually approved and we get the application out for all of our schools? Will that be something that the students who are high performers, high achievers, like the young lady spoke with earlier, that they would be able to miss those 10, 13 days and not feel the pressure of seat time? Because my understanding is that although some of the seat time is edginess, a lot of times, it's only going to the multicultural room or to the gym and sitting there. So they're not actually getting hands-on information, and I know this. So in some areas in some schools, it just depends, and students are able to make up that work. So I agree with Ms. Washington that there needs to be something that can be done, because we're already moving into that, and I do believe that we're going to be submitting those applications. Will that help our students who are over 80, 90% of their grade, but maybe 13 classes that they've missed?
So I, Laverda, Ms. Regans, and I are actually participating on the committee that is planning for the procedures for our competency-based classes. So we, we are participating, and I ask a lot of questions. I am very eager to make sure that we are very proactive and we think about how we're going to address attendance in competency-based classes. And so, could it help? Absolutely. Absolutely, it could. If it's a competency-based class, seat require, seat time is not required.
And that would only be for high schoolers, because middle schoolers and elementary don't really deal with the seat time, correct, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
But they would still have to deal with the 13 days over?
So the competency base, doesn't it take away the compulsory attendance law? It takes away the, the, the seat time requirement. So we have the, the South Carolina Compulsory Attendance Law, and you have the South Carolina Board of Regulations for Attendance, and those are two of the guiding documents. So competency does not remove compulsory. It's a lot.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to clarify, I misspoke when I was talking about the 2023, 2024 school year. It was the 2022 school year I was talking about with the grading floor. I thought that's when it was implemented.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? Thank you, Ms. Cobb.
Thank you.
All right, our next agenda item is an update from the Safety and Security Committee. Mrs. Nash.
Okay. So my computer has done something, but I've got slides, so we're all good. Okay, so. I think everybody, we all, is everybody's computer gone out? Okay. Okay. Okay, so I will go ahead and start. A couple of these slides you're going to see are just kind of ones that are previous slides that we had before, just so you guys have an idea of kind of what Safety and Security Committee has been doing, and then what the committee came up with, how, as far as like what their mission statement is, things of that nature. And I want to go ahead and say thank you to administration and the, the community that's involved, as well as our CSD, our security staff, and Ms. Katina Davis, who's played a huge role as a star in this year, of being on the safety, being part of the efforts for the Safety and Security Committee. So if we could go to the first slide, which I'll go through really quickly. If you can take a glance, we've shown this slide before, but as you can see there, we have parent representatives, student representative, principal representatives, school board members, we have Richland 2 representatives that are teachers, teacher of the year, executive team members as needed, security representatives, and then our CSD representative as well. Next slide, please. So one of the things that committee came up with as a mission is being able to pursue the unwavering safety and well-being of every student, staff member, and visitor by proactively enhance, enhancing comprehensive safety measures and fostering collaboration with community stakeholders. We commit to creating and sustaining a secure and nurturing educational environment for all. And so when we think about like the 2023, 2024 school year, a lot of what the conversation was with students and teachers, and even just outside conversations of what they had heard as being the representatives and the parents, these are our goals. If we go to the next slide, please. So areas that we wanted to cover were building safety, special needs community, which is something that, you know, sometimes is overlooked, is what are the safety needs of our special needs due to, as it pertains to safety. And so thankfully, we have Ms. Danee Rivers, who is a parent representative and also a parent of a special needs child, who has been very instrumental in looking at those measures to make it where sometimes safety is feeling like you have what you need and also belonging, and that's, that's a big part of also safety. So cyber safety, mental health, and then the really big part of this is really having our community be involved. There's other school boards that have like community that's involved on their school board. There's one school board that has only community involved on, as a committee, and then a board member or two that are, that serve on that. Because I think that what we're trying to build here is the synergy between parents and community, working with our schools. And one of the things that was in, I think, a lot of the surveys that we had, was the issue and why the Safety and Security Committee exists, is because community wanted to have a say and wanted to feel like they were heard when it came to safety and security. Next slide. All right, so the committee came up with 2023, 2024 goals. So one of those was the middle school safety detector expansion, increase a special needs awareness event, host a student-led forum on bullying and mental health. That's something the students came up with, I think is genius. Visit safe schools. Dr. Scott is not here to, today, unfortunately, because she had a bereavement, but that's one of the big things that we have on our goal list. And then host a spring parent university. So that's our goal. So next slide, please. So this was what we've kind of been working on. So for the last few meetings, it's kind of, I'll say, one of the big things that, if you've never had a committee where you had to build from the ground up, there's going to be some things where we have to figure out things. So the administration has been a vital part in what we're doing and coming up and figure out what's the best, what's the best ideas. So in talking with board members, but also the community and the committee, I heard a lot of things from the students talking about what they, the parents needed to know what was going on with vaping and gummies, but also the students overwhelmingly, I've heard from so many students, and the student representatives said that they needed to hear more about it, because what you hear and what you see, like in stores, it makes it glamorous. And they wanted to have a forum, a parent university for parents, where gummies and vaping are discussed, and the vital effects of that. So our CSD, we've spoken with them, and Ms. Lidia Williams has also been coordinating that, with talking to them about hosting a parent university for vaping and gummy, gummies on April 25th, because that was the date that we could get in order to make it for spring. So they're holding us, that for us, so that we can get feedback from the board, but they're holding that date, April 25th here at 6:00 PM, and they will take 90 minutes, 45 minutes for gummies, 45 minutes for vaping. The next item was the student back, oh, sorry, same slide, same slide. The same, okay, so this one was the student back-to-school forum. One of the things that we heard from the student representatives was they felt that going from middle to high school can be traumatic. And they felt that even high school can be traumatic. And they felt that a student forum, a back-to-school forum would be great. And so Mr. Sims and also Mr. Sherman were willing to be a part of that and be kind of like head up a student forum that's structured and supervised by our principal representatives and administration. And so student representatives would discuss, along with, you know, other administration, things that have to do with issues of bullying, peer pressure, gang violence, and solutions on how to deal with stress. And that's proposed, and I'll get into that a little bit more, but that's something that's proposed for September, and also, you know, willing, you know, for board feedback. Next slide, please. The special needs community event, this is something that has been really wonderful. And again, I want to thank Ms. Katina Davis and Ms. Danee Rivers, because they have worked tirelessly to think about ways in which, that we can, you know, improve upon our special needs community and making sure that they feel safe and they know a lot of the safety protocols that we have, that we can share. And that's been a really, really big thing. And so working with Ms. Davis, Ms. Danee Rivers, administration, she created an event for our special needs parents to access resources, support, and educational information that will help our special needs students feel more safe and have a more diverse and equitable learning environment. For just an example, like a lot of the special needs students need go bag, but, you know, making sure they have those and making sure parents know that that's something, you know, what we have here, so they feel comfortable talking to us, and if they have any issues, things of that nature. Again, just basically coming up with that synergy with the community. The next additional parent university events, the committee had several topics that they have discussed, and that would be great for parent university, such as gunlock safety, bullying, mental health, managing academic stress, that would be great and need to be scheduled in advance for 2024, 25 school year, as the calendar fills up really fast, and we are currently already dealing with limited dates available, which is why you see like TBA for September for the other two events, and then the only one, like I said, we could get for spring right now, was the April 25th event. The goal is to build a library of online resources for parents on various topics of importance and relevance to the Richland 2 community that parents can access, thereby building a stronger relationship with our parents and student guardians. A lot of times, what I've heard from parents and what I've heard from the representatives and administration is, if we can involve parents in a lot of the things that they may not know or aware of, and sometimes just need a little help in understanding, if we can do that outside of the classroom, then we can also maybe curtail a lot of the things that we see inside of the classroom, which will also help with our teachers and the stress that they're under, and just overall behavior. Next slide, please. So one of the issues that we came up with is because, again, like this committee runs from 2023 to 2024, is in the process of putting together the parent university and student forums and having things that we can bring to the board, we've encountered two issues that we have to resolve. One, in order to plan these events and get them coordinated with the school calendar, as well as building scheduled events calendar, we need to have these events scheduled and on the calendar almost a year in advance. Parent universities being presented today that have no dates, but months, are available timeframes for this year. And so we would just need the board to say that, you know, decide if, if you guys are okay with that, if you have any additional events that you would like to add, that you would like me to bring to the committee. Any additional parent universities that the board would like to see would need to also be part of that schedule. So already thinking about that for the next school year. As the board, the second issue is the board, we haven't really determined a budget for committees, so that we can make a progress and determination and clarity, as if to, if these are district-sponsored events, and would the committee need a budget for these events? Next slide, please. So two of the things that I have suggested, for the one thing is, Richland 2 School Board review list of recommended parent universities by Safety and Security Committee, and provide feedback and any additional ideas for parent university. And then the second, the Safety and Security Committee provides administration with the outline of parent university events, and administration takes that information and execute it in making parent university events a success within the parameters and guidelines that are preset for all other past events and within the budget, which is basically what we did with Stay Safe for the Summer. It wasn't, it didn't come out of like the, per se, the board budget. It came out of, hey, here's something we would like to present to administration. If there is something, money for that in the budget, then that's something that we could do. And the board would just, like I said, provide those dates early on. Okay, so next slide, please. So what's next? We've covered a lot of the things, basically based on our goals, which were special, special needs, addressing the issue of special needs, our students, and then also just building synergy, which is the overall goal with our community. So what's next? Parent university schedule provided to the board for feedback, discussion and planning of safe school visits for board members. And then lastly, you know, a lot, the board talked a lot about last year, and metal detector pilot for middle school. And so that's discussion, and, you know, would love to have feedback, because part of this is also talking, being able to express to parents in those meetings and safety and security, kind of what's going on. So they get to hear from administration on things that we can discuss of as far as safety for, for metal detectors and how, ask questions about how that will be done. So they don't feel like, you know, oh, my gosh, I don't understand what's going on, because we haven't had the opportunity to be extremely clear about those things. So that's what's next, and that is all for that presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Board members, are there any questions? All right.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, Ms. Agostini.
In terms of committees, I'm looking at, and, and thank you, Mrs. Nash, for your presentation, and thank you to all of those that serve on the committee. I guess, refresh my memory, in terms of recommendations, I see that they have something slated for April 25th. Is that something that the board needs to vote on, or they're just able to do?
So previously, what it was, was we brought these recommendations, we didn't vote on Stay Safe for the, Stay Safe for the Summer, because it was a board-sponsored, a district-sponsored event. It wasn't a board-sponsored event. So previously, we did not vote on Stay Safe for the Summer. We brought it as a recommendation. We did ask them to hold that date, because again, those dates get filled up fast, to bring it to you all, to say that if there is a consensus of if that, because that was something that the board said they wanted to deal with. So, yeah, I mean, my understanding is that we did not, and that's also something that I've spoken with other school board members who have just only citizen committees with board members that are on it, is that they presented these things, unless it was something that we were actually taking out of a board budget, then, but we're not. We're, we're asking to see if it's in the budget for administration, because it would be a district-sponsored event.
To be clear, the vaping and gummies would be a district-sponsored event?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to item 13.1, our agenda for the April 9th, 2024 board meeting. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next school board meeting is scheduled for April 9th, 2024. The meeting will begin at 5:30 PM with a call to order, because this is a regularly scheduled meeting. Once we have our call to order, then we'll move to approval of the agenda, followed by executive session. In executive session, we will discuss student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, contractual matter regarding transfer of property, employment recommendations, and certified releases. We plan to release back to public session at 6:30 PM. We will then move to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, followed by approval of the consent agenda, which will include approval of minutes from previous meeting, and classified employment releases and in-district transfers. Once the consent agenda is approved, we'll move to public participation, followed by voting on executive session items, which would include student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, and the contractual matter regarding the transfer of property, as well as employment recommendations and certified releases, and any needed, any other additional items that are discussed in executive session that needs a vote. Next, we'll move to new business, which is no action requested. The board will receive a student discipline report, followed by agenda items for the next meeting. So we'll discuss the draft agenda for the April 23rd, 2024 regular board meeting, followed by an additional public participation if needed, executive session continued if needed, voting on the executive session items if needed, conclude with board and superintendent comments, and then adjournment.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see on the April 9th, 2024 agenda, or to a future agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I would like to see a legislative update presented by Mr. Tequeta and/or Ms. Williams and/or Mr. Kelly, to give us an update, as that will be the day prior to crossover. And in general, when the legislature is in session, we generally would have had at least monthly updates. I, I'd really love to have administration give us an update on what they see going on at the State House and how it'll impact our district.
Thank you. Would, would you like to make a motion to have that added for certain, or?
Well, I will make a motion to have the legislative update added to our agenda.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Was that Ms. McFadden?
Yes.
Okay. Motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini, second by Ms. McFadden, to have a legislative update added to the next board agenda. Is there any further discussion on that?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I'll, I'll just say that during the session, I'd love to see it as a standing item, like at least once a month, it should be a standing item. Thanks.
Is that correct up there, Ms. Agostini?
It is correct.
The vote is six, yes. One not present, the motion carries. Is there any other modifications or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McFadden.
Yes, so I sent the board a letter, the competency-based letter, that we would like to send to the legislative delegation, February the 15th. I would like to add that letter to the agenda for next.
I would like to add that letter to the agenda for next week as a voting item.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion on the motion? The vote is five yes, two abstained, one not present, the motion carries. Any other additions or revisions to the agenda? All right, we will now reconvene in executive session. May I please have a motion to recess public session and reconvene in executive session?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
I move the board convene an executive session to discuss a personal matter regarding multi-year contracts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of adjourned executive session, raise your right hand. All right, the vote is unanimous, the motion carries. We are now reconvening executive session. May I have a motion to end the executive session?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
I move that we adjourned executive session at 9:08 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini, seconded by Mrs. Nash to end the executive session. Is there any discussion? You want to hand vote? All those in favor of ending the motion, raise your right hand. All right, vote is unanimous, we are out of executive session. There's no action to be taken from our executive session, so we will move on to board and superintendent comments. We will start with Mrs. Agostini.
I will just say, have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McFadden?
I would like to say that Spring Valley ARJ ROTC competed this past week, and they scored the highest possible ratings in nineteen of twenty-four categories, which has exceeded expectations. And they are the state JROTC drill team to beat. If you haven't seen them perform, it is a sight to behold. I did get an opportunity to go to one of their meets, and I'm telling you, they were on the side practicing and those that came to watch, the other people actually on the platform performing were watching our drill team. They are phenomenal. They are number one in the state. So they have their last competition, which is a state competition on April the 13th. If you're able to go, go and support our Spring Valley JROTC drill program and the Raiders. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Mrs. Washington?
Just wanted to say thank you to all of the employees who showed up to advocate for your positions. We hear you loud and clear, and I just want to say super, a super, super thank you to all of my inspirational moment guests from this month, from CFI, Bridge Creek, and Joseph Kills, Richland Two, enjoy your spring break.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash.
Okay, so I wanted to say, one, thankful to all the teachers who came and proud and just, we're just really excited that you guys came to be a part of the budget process. The clarion call that Dr. Scott put out and all of us, it worked, so that's great. I got, had an opportunity to do the Ms. Bridgeview Pageant and be a judge, and I just want to say to all those wonderful ladies, great job, and everybody involved, Ms. Lori Gamow and so many other people, they did such a wonderful job. Also, to Dr. Nicola Smiling, teacher of the year at Windsor, congratulations, she goes to my church and I am so thankful for her. So does Deanna Savage. This has been a great week for Richland Two and Grace Life. So, which brings me to my next thing. On Saturday, right here at RTI2, is going to be the Grace Life Easter Fun Extravaganza from 11:00 AM to 1:00, so everybody make sure to come out to that if you're watching online. And I was supposed to emcee that, but I have to go get my taxes done. So go have a lot of fun for me. And then on Sunday, I would like to invite all of you to come join us for five services, Thursday, 6:45 and then 8:15 on Sunday, 9:30, 11:00 AM and 12:30. It's going to be fun. I will be there doing Good Morning Grace Life at seven o'clock. Thank you. And, oh, and happy spring break.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter?
Thank you to our inspirational moment. That was fantastic. And thank you, Joseph Kills' children as well, and the ROTC. And I want to say, have a happy spring break.
All right, thank you. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So thank you to the board, but I want to let our community, our Richland Two family know that we have one of the South Carolina Teacher of the Year finalists in our district. So Will Epps, so we want to congratulate him. He is a Blythewood High School's science teacher. Will isn't just a Richland Two Teacher of the Year, he was just named one of five finalists for the state of South Carolina Teacher of the Year. His Bengal biodiesel program at Blythewood High School is truly a remarkable, and the state judges thought so also. So congratulations to Mr. Will Epps. Had the privilege this morning to be with our state superintendent, Ellen Weaver, because she visited Lonnie B. Nelson Elementary School. So I want to give a big thank you to the South Carolina State Superintendent, Ellen Weaver, for taking time to visit Lonnie B. Nelson Elementary this morning. She met with our Academy for Civic Engagement, or ACE, agent students. So these are the students, if you remember, from our state of the district, their mayor, their class representatives, they run for office. So we are teaching early on why civics is so important. And so they discussed government, elections, leadership, and of course, advocating for public education. It was a great opportunity, and the kids actually sang Happy Birthday to Superintendent Weaver because today is her birthday. And then last but not least, I had the privilege to attend a spoken word showcase this weekend. I saw an incredible display of Richland Two students' talent at the Rebirth Annual Spoken Word Program at the Kroger Center for the Arts. Students like Karon Jackson, a Richland Northeast High School senior, who is taking his dance talents to the Juilliard School in New York City or to Fordham University, both which have world-class programs. So from poetry to spoken word to dance, there was just so much Richland Two talent on display. So we just wanted to recognize those students and tell them how much I appreciate them, thank you for what they do. And for everybody in our district, I want to wish everyone a happy spring break and a happy Easter. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. And I would just like to conclude by expressing my gratitude for everyone that did come out tonight and speak to us, both during the budget input as well as public participation. I always encourage our students to tell us what you're thinking about stuff. We need to know and, and we may not necessarily agree with you, but we need to know because it will shape the way we think in the future. Having said that, though, you have a voice and we want to hear your voice. And we encourage all of you to speak to us every time you see us. Now, if I may have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Washington?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the March 26th, 2024 board meeting.
Is there a second? All right, motion was made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Let's hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Vote is unanimous, the meeting is adjourned.